Okay, I have 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Hingham Select Board to order. It's December 21, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I note for the record that Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher, are participating for the Select Board. Next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 23 Department Budget Requests. And we begin with Keith German for the Veterans G A R Hall and Celebrations, and we'll start with veterans, Keith.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. It's an honor to be here tonight and to present this budget. Go ahead, Michelle. The Veteran Services Mission is clearly outlined here. One of our main priorities obviously is to administer the benefits to qualifying veterans and their dependents under Mass General Law, Chapter 115. So this is for all the veterans of the town that qualify and their dependents. So that could be a child, adult child with handicap. It could also be a widow or widower. We provide emergency financial assistance to veterans in need. We coordinate all of the military ceremonies and events that recognize and honor all of our Hingham veterans. We manage a townwide flag notification alert system for the town's 37 municipal flag poles. And we coordinate with regional, state, and federal officials to ascertain programs and advocate for veterans and the other benefits that they have so duly earned. Next, please. This is a file photo of Veterans Day. As some of you may or may not know, I was not here this year, and that was conducted by our chairman for the Hingham Veterans Council, Captain Ben DeLu. Next. This is a quick shot of the matrix. The Commonwealth requires that Veterans Service Officers, formerly called Veterans Agents, be certified and be compliant with Mass General Law, Chapter 115. The certification process renews every three years. So I had the unique opportunity of renewing online this year. That was quite an experience. Usually it's done in person in Central Mass where all of the agents, there's over 250 Veteran Service Officers gather under the state guidelines to conduct some training, some business, and then we test out, I think it's on the third or fourth day. Massachusetts is still the only state in the nation that provides this type of benefit for veterans and their dependents. There are many, many veterans' benefits nationwide. For instance, Florida has like a free hunting and fishing license, and that's about the extent of that. So as you can see, this goes from zero to 100, and it's good to be that we're at the 100. Total number of federal or Department of Veteran Affairs cases managed. So not only do I deliver state benefits, but I also guide citizens of Hingham to the federal benefits that they may have earned. In fiscal year 21, we had 177 service-connected disabled claims filed, five pinching claims, and 26 dependent claims filed for a total of 208. The total compensation award in fiscal year 21 was $271,942. Or if you average that out to a monthly award per person, it's about $1,300 plus dollars. Next, please. And that's money, I should add, that that's money that's being returned to the community. That's above and beyond what we do here. Some key initiatives. We have a Veterans in Need and a Veterans Benefit Fund here. Those are two funds that we use in strict accordance with Mass General Law as well to provide immediate needs. Some of these benefits that we provide through the state, depending on the timeframe, can take up to 10 days to become real money. Having those donation or gift accounts readily available allows us to put food and fuel in a roof over someone's head in the event of an emergency. The Valor Act, that's a program that we offer here similar to the senior tax work off. Currently, we have five, as of today, authorized positions are out of the 10 that we are authorized filled. And I'd like to say that they provide, that's not on the slide, over 2,500 hours of volunteer work. That's an amazing amount, and I couldn't do this job without them and their support. And the Commonwealth recognizes them for their service by exempting $1,500 off their annual property tax. We also support the Commander Paul Anderson Home for Veterans. It's a six-room, single-room occupancy dwelling located in the Fort Hill area of town. Currently, it houses five residents. We manage the town's consolidated flag purchase program. I'm honored to say that we, with those points that we established from last year, we were able to get two new flag pole kits. One can be seen in the Sambo and Auditorium. It has the Mass State Flag on it. We never had that before. And we have a new Veterans Vietnam 50th Anniversary Flag and Pole in my office to commemorate the 50th anniversary. That's been a decade-long initiative under President Obama. We manage the town's military ceremonies. The Hank Maud Service Above Self Veteran of the Year Award. For those of you who attended the program this year, that award was bestowed upon Henry or Jack Rayburn, as we like to call him, Coast Guard veteran and Coast Guard Academy alum. Serve as a military liaison to Hingham High School Veterans Appreciation Club. That's quite an honor for me. And I'd love to work with the youth of Hingham and help to coordinate their skills and their talents and match them up to veterans of all eras. I think whenever we can put our students in a room together with veterans of all eras, all ages, it's a win-win for all of us. I'm currently advocate for the restoration of the town's military monuments. We have 20 monuments in town, soon to be 21, with the addition of the Sergeant Boris Demko Memorial Plaque, which will be affixed to his stone at the memorial located off of Lincoln Street and Beale Street near the 99. Next, please. The salaries were taken from the worksheet. $115,194. Currently have one full-time personnel director, that's myself, and one part-time personnel administrative assistant. The expenses shows a year-to-year decrease of about 18%, which I'll get into in a minute. The expenses is the only part, or what I call the controllable part of this budget. So this is not the bottom line. This is all that we really control. So some of the major items on here, you can see wreaths, flags, flagpole repair for 4th of July. Those are those flags that you see along the side of Main Street. About $1,500 plus for office supplies and about $1,200 for in-state travel mileage reimbursement. Next, please. So these are the major items. These are the non-controllable. These are the items that we are required to provide to our veterans and/or their dependents who qualify for Mass General Law, Chapter 115. Ordinary benefits, which is sustenance and fuel. The average monthly request to the Commonwealth of Mass is about $3,100 from this office, $3,100. As you can see, the medical attention and supplies really is the bulk of what we do here. Many more people will qualify for the medical portion of this benefit and not the ordinary benefits. So the ordinary benefits and the medical attention supplies, in order to qualify for either one of those programs, an individual or citizen of the town who is a veteran and/or dependent qualifies by being 200%, lives 200% below the federal poverty line. The miscellaneous items, that's again covered under the law. That's the decoration of the graves at Memorial Day. So the three weeks preceding Memorial Day, all graves in Hingham that are designated as a veteran must be decorated with a standard flag. Approximately right now, we have over 3,000 graves. Next, please. Any questions on the Veterans Services Controllable, Non-Controllable? That's a little bit tricky sometimes. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are you finished on the veterans?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So Bill, do you have any questions?
I have some questions, comments. I'm gonna wait to the end.
Liz?
No, no questions. Thank you though, Keith. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Keith, I do have a question. On your expenses, I noticed that meetings and seminars of from 2022 to 2023 is down by $1,000. Does that mean that you're going to fewer meetings and seminars? Or is the cost down or being covered somewhere else?
So it's kind of a hybrid question, Mr. Chairman. So it's about, like you mentioned, it's about $1,000 or closer to like a 50% drop.
Yep.
And the reason that is was we, for over five months, the Administrative Assistant Chair had been empty. We did not have anyone backfill that position when the woman left last year, last January. That was one reason. The second reason to that is by having just the sole person, myself, the director, go to those seminars and bring the information back, kind of a teach-the-teacher type of thing. I know Bill is aware of that program. We use it in the military a lot. It saves a lot of expenses. So we decided to have the new hire, which I'm glad to say we hired a woman this year, just this fall. She will just be focusing her end on the accounting portion of the business or the business end of this. And I kind of handle everything else that's related to veterans and dependents and benefits, not associated with the more of a bookkeeping type of thing. So we don't really need her to attend those. And if there's anything that's pertinent to her that relates to the system that we use, which we currently use a new system for the Commonwealth of Mass called On Base, then I would be easily be taught that skill, and I would bring that back to the office.
Got it. Okay, let's move on to G A R Hall.
I'm sorry. You know, my apologies. Joe, I do have some questions. Is that okay?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were breaking this up. Okay. Michelle, can you go back to Keith's earlier slides? Maybe start off the first one? Okay, move on.
Which piece are you looking for, Bill?
Yeah, so Keith, one of the questions, sorry, one of the things you mentioned. You said that you were able to give money back to the town. Could you explain that again?
Sure. So yeah, like I mentioned, Massachusetts, very unique. There's over 250 Veteran Service Officers strung around the Commonwealth. Places out west where the populations are very small in the cities and towns, they group up together and have what they call districts. In fact, Hingham, about a decade ago, used to be part of a district with Situate and Cohasset. Those, those people are required to provide the benefits when anyone walks in. Okay, so if a veteran walks in, I check his, I vet him, him or her, and we find out they're a veteran. They live in the town, and they want to file, for instance, a service-connected disability claim because they were a tail gunner on a Huey in Vietnam. And now they're finding that they're over 70 years of age now, and they're not hearing so well. So by enabling them to sit down here, walk them through the claims process, spend quite a bit of time with them, the average claim takes about one to three months to put together. And it takes about a year right now, current run rate with the federal government, to adjudicate that claim. And then that person would recognize a percentage or an award for their service-connected disability, for this example. And that equals real dollars. So those dollars are then returned in kind, if you will. That's supplemental income to those folks. And it's, you know, spent within the Commonwealth. It's spent here in town or, you know, the local sub shop, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of how I break that down. So with that said, I have that second line that was there. I don't see it now. But I have 208 federal clients. Where on average, the state clients I have fluctuates from anywhere, on average is about 20. Since I've had this position over the last decade-plus years, it's fluctuated from as high as 36 to as low as 18. And it's, but the mean rate is about 20. So those are state clients that live below the poverty rate that are afforded a benefit at a 75-25% split from the state to the town on their medical supplies and/or ordinary allowances because they live below the federal poverty line, 200%. The federal and state benefits could be anything from, the federal benefit could be anything from, like I mentioned, a service-connected disability. It could be a death benefit. It could be an indemnity compensation for a widow or widower, which is a monthly amount. Those are paid out monthly by the federal government.
Okay, understood. Michelle, can you forward the next slide? Okay, you and I have talked a lot about the need for a veterans' grave officer. Do you still think we need one? And, you know, what are your thoughts on how we kind of make that happen?
You know, I've been tossing that around. It's a tough, it's a tough road right now with the, excuse me, one minute. Because of the amount of graves, which I said is just about over 3,000, the six cemeteries in Hingham, which are private, adds a special nuance to the equation, which makes it a little bit more difficult. To answer your question, it's kind of still batting that around. I'm trying to see if it would be possible, you know, in the near future, to shift some of my Valor Act, or I like to call them my Valor Actors, to that position as well. Of course, that would be like a seasonal type thing. And if I could just draw an example to that, we had a citizen in town, a private citizen, who collaborated with an organization called SNAP. And the Daughters of the American Revolution of Hingham were able to raise over $13,000 over the last few months. And I'm proud to say that Hingham participated on that National Wreath Across America event. So that's laying a green wreath with a red bow on the grave of every veteran. So in Hingham, like I said, we had way too, you know, too many for this year. Last year, we participated. We did about 500 at High Street. This year, we doubled that effort, and we had more than doubled it. We had over 1,300 wreaths placed. And this year, we chose St. Paul Cemetery and the cemetery at Fort Hill, which was the amount that they had raised, which was a little bit over $13,000. If we had a full-time, it wouldn't be full-time meaning 40 hours a week. But if we had an actual designated agent or Veterans Graves Officer, events like that would be a lot easier. I think we have the Memorial Day event covered with the decoration of the graves because that actually comes under my purview. So that person would actually work for me anyway. So that would, you know, that's kind of a slam dunk here in the office. But I'm still, I'm still looking in the short term to see if we can do without it by shifting the assets that we already have now to that.
Got it. And just one last comment, you know, I just want to note for those watching and people zooming in tonight. All of these initiatives that you see on the screen, and there's a lot that's not on the screen. These are all initiatives that Keith has started and championed. You know, I've been involved with veterans initiatives in town, really going back since, you know, really probably about 15, 20 years. And the role of the Veteran Service Officer in town, Veterans Agent in town, was really Veterans Day, Memorial Day benefits. Chapter 115 benefits, federal benefits. All of these initiatives and all the activity we see out of the Veteran Service Office is because of Keith. So Bravo Zulu, Keith, for all that you do. And there's a lot that you do that you haven't even listed. So thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the G A R Hall.
So the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Hall is actually physically located at 358 Main Street. It's managed by a Board of Trustees, which is appointed by your board. There are currently, is currently a vacancy on that, if I could bring that to the public's attention. This is a 133-year-old historic museum memorializing the military service of Hingham's veterans dating back to the Civil War and pre-Civil War. We do have some memorabilia from the Revolution up until today's conflicts. We had been providing self-guided tours. Haven't been able to really reinstitute that post-COVID. Again, two things, the constant fluctuation of the rules and/or the lack of the Valor Act folks where I can place them accordingly, where we needed them in the office right now more than we needed them over there. So just a little bit of juggling with that, but we hope to have that back up and running. It was the first and third Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We would have somebody there. You would sign the book. You were welcome to come in. And it's kind of like it says, self-guided, the person that's there at the door may know a little bit about the hall, but may not. You know, there's explanations and some tags, and there's things that will help you understand as you make your way around. So it's not necessary that we have an actual guide there. The hall functions as a meeting place for the Hingham's Veterans Organizations, VFW, American Legion, Disabled Veterans of America. The Hingham Militia also has granted permission to use the hall. We store the flags for the 50-flag program, which funds our parade. The police and scouts I mentioned use the hall as well. For the last 12 years, in the springtime, we've hosted a Hingham High School sophomore annual History Day event there. That's a chance for students. They double up on their blocks. They walk over from the high school. It's a free field trip, which the school principal and board really dig because they don't have to pay for anything. So it's a chance for the students to bring the history books alive. They get to actually meet veterans of the eras that they're looking at. I'm proud to say every year, you know, moving forward, maybe not. But every year, we've had World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Cold War, Gulf War, Iraq, Afghanistan. We were able to put those men and women up on the stage and introduce themselves and tell a little bit about their story. And then the students usually have a snack there, and then they move around to the exhibits, and they ask a ton of questions. It's really great to see. Hoping to do that again this year. Fiscal year 23, operating expenses, $24,187. $15,000 plus for repairs, maintenance, service contracts, elevator, grounds, et cetera. Nine, little $9,153 for utilities and supplies. That's your electric, gas, water, telephone. So these are the things that keep the building, that $24,000 represents just keeping the building up and running and alive. It's a hidden gem of Hingham. It should be visited just as much as our Hingham Heritage Museum, our old ordinary. It's in the same quality. I would put that in the same quality as those two structures as well. Next slide.
That's the last slide.
Okay, yeah. So we'll back up to celebrations. But any questions on Grand Army?
Liz, any questions?
Keith, could you just explain the elevator service contract that's referenced?
Yeah, so maybe about three years ago, there was an initiative, I think through facilities, or it started up on your floor, on the third floor, to consolidate the elevator contract for the vendor to service all of the elevators at Hingham so we could get, I guess, more bang for our buck that way. So this year, we hope to realize a little bit of a savings now that it's been in, that contract has been in fruition now for, I think, the last two years, or this will be the third. And now we're starting to see some savings on that. It did just go from a quarterly bill to a monthly bill. So other than just adjusting our time schedules, I don't see any real issue with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Bill, I have no questions. Keith, again, I've got some budget questions.
Sure.
So I noticed that your R and M building expense is up over 50%. You've got a real significant increase in telephone expenses. They sort of hovered around $1,500 since 2020, and now for '23, we're suddenly up over $2,300. Can you just talk about those two items, the R and M building and telephone?
Right, so that telephone is about a 47% increase, like you mentioned, which is about $738 real dollars. And, you know, looks big percentage, but dollar-wise, you know, really not that much. But what happened was Comcast, who's our carrier, we, I don't know how to word this, realigned our contract, maybe? They were billing us as 358 Main Street, and now we're being billed as Comcast Business. I know that prior to Bill coming onboard, Steve had looked at the issue quite extensively. He had some back and forth with them. We weren't able to get that fixed before he left, and Bill took over, and I haven't really revisited it yet. Not sure why it happened, but it happened all of a sudden and really without notice. Like, we got a single letter that said, hey, we're going to be charging you as a business now. So I'm not so sure if that's right or wrong, to be honest with you. And then looking back at it, just to reiterate, and maybe you and Liz, and maybe even Bill may not know this, that was left off the town inventory. So we have no service over there like all the other buildings. So I'm not sure why or how that happened as well. But if that could be adjudicated, maybe that could bring some of that cost down as well.
Sure. And then what about the 5,000-plus increase on buildings?
So the building, like I mentioned in the first, second sentence, is 133 years old. Just this last storm, I know there was much damage around the town. Literally, windows are falling out of the building. So as that building ages, those costs of repair and maintenance will greatly increase as well. And again, there's nothing being done there except having the building open and running. So there isn't like we're doing anything extraordinary or extracurricular. That's just the day-to-day operation, and the foreseeable future says that that increase is needed to keep the building from falling into disrepair.
Got it. Got it. Okay, uh, um, so then finally we can move to celebrations.
The celebrations budget, um, seventeen thousand five six seven, I think is in your book. My direct oversight is thirteen thousand eight seventeen. The remaining balance is uh, July fourth, first responder details, that's earmarked for that. Placement and replacement of metal grave markers for deceased veterans in Hingham Cemeteries in accordance with Mass General Law. Production of annual ceremonies and associated wreaths and plantings, or we call decorations, these are the events that we cover. National Peace Officers Memorial Day, Memorial and Veterans Day Observances. The Battle of Grape Island Commemoration, Fourth of July, POW MIA National Recognition Day. Seminole Foss Recognition Day, which was a really great event this year, uh, held over at the Hingham Shipyard. Uh, members of his family were there and I, I've received several. Uh, thank yous from then, it was really one of the best we've ever had there. And one that I don't think made the list is the um, and I feel it's really important, is the National Pearl Harbor. Um, Recognition Day. So this year was the eightieth commemoration of that event. And there is a US Navy Memorial over at the Hingham Shipyard where we proudly fly the National Ensign. The US Navy Flag and the Flag of the Commonwealth. There's two stones there that speak to the enormous amount of work that the shipyard workers. And the sailors did, who sailed and saved the world, basically, during World War Two. And when we think about it, that saving grace was from a ship that was designed and developed right here in Hingham. So to have myself and a World War Two veteran, uh, Ed Demko, this year lay a wreath there. And it was, you know, very sparsely attended, again, it's the eightieth anniversary. And the gentleman I chose, and I, and I don't say this lightly, but I say it to show the enormity of the gravity of the situation. Said, well, geez, why'd you choose me? And I, I kind of looked at him and I think that's when the sobering uh, news hit him, he was the last. He is our last World War Two veteran. And it didn't really catch up to him until that day. So for the paper to cover that, that was a great event, uh, he's ninety-four years old. Not sure we would have an event like this again, you know, in the, in the years to come. Um, it's just the end, it's going to be the end of an era, and uh, for those who, who uh, take pride in, in thanking those from the Greatest Generation. It was a privilege and an honor for me to be there with him in um, just an amazing event.
Thank you. Uh, Liz, any questions on the celebrations budget?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
And I also have no questions. Um, so now I'll ask if uh, there are any members of the public who have. Questions on the Veterans G I R Hall or celebrations budgets? I see none, uh, Keith, um, your efforts speak for themselves. Um, but we really can see your personal dedication to this work, and it is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move on to information technology, and I believe we have Bill Hardigan here.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman, and members of the select board, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this budget. Uh, my first trip uh, through this board uh, here in, in Hingham, but uh, I've been through municipal budget in the past, so. Uh, hopefully I do okay.
Well, Bill, if, if you have technical difficulties, it will truly be embarrassing, so.
Yeah, that, that would be a problem.
Let's proceed, okay.
Sure, so uh, the mission and services is um, pretty much ripped uh, right from what uh, you've seen in the past. Uh, from uh, Steve Becker, I did, did tweak it a little bit, but basically we provide technology services to all twenty-six town departments. As well as boards and committees, uh, we have sixteen locations across a fiber network. Um, certainly, you know. What can occupy a significant amount of time is the cybersecurity defenses, uh, web spam filters and endpoint antivirus and, and such, and. Um, I know there's been some press around some of that lately, so I'm, I'm sure there'll be a question on to of that. Um, and you know, in terms of uh, actual things we touch, um, it's about three hundred or so user accounts. Um, thirty-six servers, two storage area networks, two hundred and, and user devices, um, you know. Lots of stuff um, that we touch. We have uh, the voice network, the phone services, which uh, you know, both town and school, it's a shared phone service. Um, so the server switches and handsets involved with that and. All the fun move add change when people move rooms and numbers and um, whatnot that comes with that. And then, you know, somebody's going to buy and configure this stuff, so I guess we have to do it. Um, so we procure, configure, deploy, and maintain all of the uh, above-mentioned uh, hardware. Uh, as well as reviewing it for end-of-life and uh, properly disposing of it um, as well. And then we've got the various websites and social media accounts uh, utilized throughout the town. Next slide, Michelle. So, some key initiatives, uh, some of these I, I know were uh, here last year and. We've got some updates on, some came off, but we've done a fiber loop, we're uh, pending the last bits of delivery on that. Uh, that's a project that's been out there, and I know it got delayed with uh, COVID and manufacturing delays, particularly from Corning, who manufactures the fiber. Optic cabling, um, but hopefully we'll get that kicked off soon and, and, you know, thus far, the weather has been conducive for out, outstall work. So hopefully they can get up there and uh, start doing that real soon. Uh, we're working on the upgrade for the uh, Town Hall IT Data Center area. Um, we work with an engineer who is familiar with these kind of operations and uh, has done them in the past and. Unfortunately, they're also familiar with uh, federal and state procurement law, so they're uh, very familiar with the process. Uh, that it can take, uh, work with municipal government. So they've uh, completed some thirty percent design documents, they've been at, back out to do some more, um, and carry that through to eighty percent. Um, so we're working on that and awaiting that, which we should get shortly. Uh, I've been working on our network switch upgrade project, I know uh, Steve had talked about that for a bit and. Yeah, we're, it's, it's time to, to do it, I think the can's been kicked down the road enough. Um, the equipment is hitting end-of-life in twenty-two, so I've been reaching out to a number of vendors, getting some quotes and. Um, you know, that's the one big capital uh, expense we're looking for for next year. We did upgrade our server backup appliance, that was something that was uh, uh, implemented, and I know uh, we did that in May when. I first came here, um, so we're actually able to back up things in a very rapid fashion now with the new hardware. And we have the capacity, we're actually completing backups in about a four or five-hour window now, uh, backed up and. Off-site for cloud backup uh, in a very timely fashion, which helps me to sleep well at night, so uh, we know it's all safe. Implement this network monitoring and alerting using utility WhatsApp Gold, um, so it can actually proactively tell us if we have a problem. If we've got high uh, utilization on a server, uh, we can see what's going on with the CPU memory bound. Or uh, disk I O, or if it's up or down, so we actually are getting proactive uh, email alerts. Uh, when things of that nature occur, so we can try to get he- ahead of the problem before it becomes a real problem for um, the, our customers, the uses of the system. Uh, we had some challenges with the help desk ticketing system, so we replaced that, um, and that's been working out very well. And the big project uh, that was in the FY twenty-two budget, the storage area network. Uh, we've got the disk storage installed and uh, should be installed in the, the head-end nodes. Uh, in, within the next thirty days, and that'll uh, put a nice bow on that project, and that'll be done and complete and. Carry us forward for uh, you know, the foreseeable future on storage needs and um, server management. And one thing we're investigating is a universal endpoint management suite. Basically, that's a big fancy word for a, a software that manages our desktops. It'll produce inventory as well as allow us to do software updates, uh, security vulnerability, um, mitigation by. Proactively pushing out updates um, to the devices and then pulling reports to make sure that they actually install them and receive them. Um, and we can, you know, create custom reports for custom things. Uh, that may not be a full security vulnerability, but we can check for existence of a file that might be vulnerable, such as. What's been in the news lately of this logger, um, there's a specific file you can look at, so this would. Uh, allow us to do this, and I've been soliciting, soliciting quotes from a number of different vendors on the, that work in this avenue that. Um, I've explored in the past or I know uh, other communities who use them, so I'm also getting firsthand references for. Um, products that they're happy with. So, next slide, please. So now the, the money, um, you know, budget, uh, we, the one change in staff is the GIS coordinator is, is full-time. Into the technology um, budget now, um, that's a change from prior. But, you know, three hundred and ninety-six thousand forty-three total, we've got two reimbursements we do receive from other departments. Uh, we, just over fifty-eight thousand dollars from the school for some of the shared services, because we do support. Um, the shared voice service, um, and we also support the school administration, because they're physically here in this, in Town Hall Complex as well. And uh, where River is utilizing GIS uh, work with Bonnie. Um, so they're generously uh, helping to offset some of the salary for that position as well. Um, so that brings our total salary to three twelve oh forty-six for the budget. Our expenses were three twenty-one, um, you know, falls in a couple of different buckets. The service and support agreements, that's, you know, our, our Munis and our Comcast and FiOS and. Uh, all of those fun things that we got to pay every year to keep the lights on. Computer supplies, um, toner, um, cellphone cases and the likes. Uh, repair and maintenance, uh, you know, something's broke, we got to fix it. And general admin and support services, uh, cables and supplies like that, um, that are just kind of general. Catch-all and, you know, some staff training and whatnot in that bucket as well. Uh, next slide, Michelle, I think we have one more. That's it, that was the last one, okay. All right, so uh, questions?
All right, thank, thank you for the presentation. Uh, Liz, any questions?
Um, thank you, Bill, um, could you just explain the um, the service agreements, how that amount, it went up a little bit for this year? If, are there two major changes there?
Yeah, there, there are no major changes, um, this, you know, contractual, you know, annual up, upgrades that we get from. Um, units, they used to do about five percent, our GIS does about a five percent. Um, there's some new uh, you know, MDTs uh, that fire and police are using, so the support maintenance on those. Will come into effect next year, um, so those are bumping up. And also, I'm, you know, really want to get that uh, desktop management suite in here, and so that'll be a annual renewal next year. Um, on that, on top of that as well.
Okay, great, and I think you said it was the network switch that needed to be upgraded, or that was at the end of its useful life?
Yeah, there's, there's uh, roughly thirty switches um, throughout the um, uh, infrastructure that we manage. Um, and that's, you know, kind of going to fall under a more capital request and then operating. Um, you know, some of the quotes, you know, we're looking at upwards three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but this equipment is, you know, ten, eleven, twelve years old and uh. It's being asked to do work that it wasn't uh, designed to do, you know, we didn't have Zoom back then when those switches were manufactured, so uh. Uh, you know, it's, it's time, they're still working, but we want to get ahead of the, the fact that. After end-of-life, Cisco won't offer any support, so if one goes down, we've got a few spares on the shelf, but we don't want to really get too far behind the eight ball on that.
Right, understood, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, Joe. Oh, you're asking Bill.
Sorry, sorry, not you, Bill, the other Bill.
Bill, I'm glad to hear that the upgrades on the IT Room Center are kind of moving along here, uh, what's, what do you think the timeline is for getting that done?
Yeah, oh, we need to obviously receive the eighty percent, um, that'll finalize the design, make sure that we're all on the same page. We did have a question on uh, some structural integrity on the floor, uh, relative to placement of the UPS unit that'll be in there, so. I worked with the engineer last week to find some alternate solutions that we're exploring, hopefully we get that all back, um. You know, hopefully mid-January, um, we'll get together our bid document and put that out for RFP. And, you know, see how that process goes and then availability of contractors uh, sooner rather than the later. Um, I, I'd like to get it done, and we do, the, the winter is the perfect time, in my opinion, to do it, because. At some point, we have to remove the existing air conditioning unit, um, but we're still going to leave the equipment running that's generating heat. So it's much easier to cool a room in the cold weather than it is in July, we could open a window. Um, in January, February, if we need a supplemental cooling, so I'd like to see it being done uh, in the, in the cooler temperatures rather than the warm. So that's, that's my goal.
That makes sense, yeah, thank you.
Bill, thank you, you've, you've, you know, an- answered my questions as well. Uh, one thing that you did not talk about, uh, which is not really a budget item, is how you keep all of us on our toes, that these. Fake emails go out, and if someone actually responds, they, they haven't practiced good uh, good health with respect to uh. Their IT uh, knowledge, so uh, thank you for keeping us and the whole town uh, on its toes to make sure that we don't fall. Victim to ransomware or some of the other things that can happen if someone clicks on the wrong link, so.
We try, uh, and, you know, do a lot of reading with a lot of uh, the information we get from Homeland Security and the FBI and, and. Si- you know, various agencies, um, it's a lot of reading.
Yep, thank you. Any members of the public have uh, any comments or questions? Okay, excellent presentation for the uh, information technology budget, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now we turn to um, Historic Preservation. And I believe Andrea Young is here. Where is Andrea? You're still muted, Andrea.
Okay, I've been talking to myself all this time.
Yeah.
Unless you can read lips, uh, anyway, well, thank you very much for this opportunity, it's great to see everyone. And um, I am looking forward to uh, going through my. My shtick here, so uh, I am the administrator for two commissions, as you know. The Historical Commission and the Historic Districts Commission.
Right.
And both of them are, um, the mission is to preserve the town's historic architectural. And archaeological resources for future generations. Um, and to preserve the town's unique character and maintain the sense of place that residents and visitors associate with Hingham. Next one. The Historical Commission plans and implements programs uh, to identify, evaluate, and protect historic resources. And that's part of our job that's required by the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. And Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eighty D. Um, and the most important part of that is to maintain the town's comprehensive community inventory. And um, we add, we add. Uh, buildings periodically, most recently, it's been at the request of the homeowner. Um, who wants to make sure that there's some kind of protection for um, his or her property. And so we gladly do that, if there's some historic significance to the property, uh, we will. Take that to the commission for consideration, and then uh, they'll vote and um. They get added to the inventory. Um. The commission also works with town departments to ensure the consideration of historic resources. In community planning efforts and in project permitting and oversight. Um, and we have participated in the development of the town's master plan. I have to say that um, over the years, it's been um, very gratifying. To see the support that um, the commissions get from other departments. Um, it is very. It is very rare that we are overlooked at this point. So, you know, whether it's signage at Bathing Beach, whether it's traffic project and many others. We really enjoy the cooperation of other town departments. Appreciate it. Let's see. We also coordinate the review of state or federally funded local projects with the Mass Historical Commission to ensure the protection of local historic resources. And I would say probably the most recent was the, the Alliance Development. I think that was archaeological, an archaeological review there. And also there was an archaeological review on the site of a, of the proposed ownership meeting house. New. Their public, their, you know what I'm saying? Sorry. Yeah, their new parish house. Thank you. And then we want to make sure that the public is aware of Kingham's history and heritage. And so we either collaborate with other entities or develop projects on our own to, to get that accomplished. Next, thank you. The historic districts commission is, has a challenging job. And they are the ones that conduct design review of proposed projects in historic districts. And sometimes people don't understand that the decisions made are not are not without foundation. That we are restricted by the Secretary of the Interior standards for work on historic properties. And so that's the basis of our guidelines. That's the basis of our review. And that nationally is the case for all historic districts commissions throughout the country. We also try very hard to work with property owners or their representatives to facilitate the application and design review process. The sooner they can come in and talk about their plans for their property. It's better because it saves them money in the long run, I think, because I, you know, I can mention to them, it's unlikely that something will be approved and here's why. And so that saves revisions. I can also help them get prepared for, for the public meetings where a lot of detail is required. The more detail that is presented to the, to the board, the easier it is for them to understand the project and approve the project. Um, let's see. And anyway, you know, the end goal really is to try and make sure that the, the applicant gets pretty much what they would like to get within, you know, the restrictions of the Secretary of the Interior standards. So that's, that's a back and forth process. And, but I have to say, one other thing that's important is that our realtors in town have done a very good job of making sure that they disclose that properties are located in a historic district. And I get calls all the time wanting to know whether something is on the inventory, whether it's in a district and what the difference is, whether it's just listed or whether, what it means if it's in a historic district. Next. So this is just the map of our districts. And as you can see, the original districts and the oldest start at the harbor and with North Street primarily, and they move up along Main Street. The, these were done, these were developed and approved by town meeting. Beginning in the late sixties and I think our most recent one was two thousand and seven with the expansion of the Kingham Center Historic District. Key initiatives. We're going to be working and collaborating with other entities in town to create a walking trail. So it's a heritage trail and historic trail. And to that end, I'm meeting with the CEO of the Quincy Chamber of Commerce tomorrow and trying to understand how they, how successful, they were successful in implementing their president's trail. And so I have a ton of questions and hopefully we'll get some answers that will help us in our effort. We also, this year are going to launch an educational series of speakers notable in the field of American history. And we have engaged one such speaker, John Meacham. And will be, so I have to read all his books before. And also we're going to be able to complete the restoration of the bell tower ringing components, which is just wonderful. It'll be nice to have that resource completed so that the bell ringers can not be straining and stretching and whatever else. And so it's, we hope to have that done by the end of February, I hope. Then the Canterbury Street Cemetery has been, has been pretty much restored with the exception of the ground cover. We had consultants working on the gravestones and they've repaired them. They've found some new ones. Footstones and headstones as well. And so it's, it's, it's really quite a thing to see. And, and my buddy Randy, he's here, has been very helpful getting the work done that we needed to get done, to make sure that the consultants could do their job without having to dig through weeds and brush. So. Sorry. Damn. Let's see. And we have also the, have produced, the historical commission has produced a number of books, as you're aware, in the past. And we've also produced videos that have been very, very enlightening, I think. And I have a link to all of them. So there is all in one place. So I'd be happy to send that out to anybody. We have, we have a video that talks about the shipyard. Sorry. We have a video that talks about the shipyard. We have another one that took a tour through Benjamin Lincoln House before the society purchased it. We also have a wonderful video about the history of the bell tower and also about Tuttleville, which many people don't know about as a part of our town. So, uh, let's see. And we also sponsor, sponsor an annual essay contest. And this was the third this year and for high school seniors and they can receive a five hundred dollar award if they win that particular, if they're judged to be the winner of that contest. And then another big part of what we do is to fund projects that are eligible with grants from the Green Bush Historic Preservation Trust. And I would say we probably give out about a hundred thousand dollars annually. And this is the only program that is available to private homeowners. And so, and many do take advantage of that. So I think that's it. And salaries, it's just me. And so there's my salary and the expenses. I would say the major items are the memorial bell tower repair and maintenance on an annual basis. And that includes buying ropes because they break or stays or other parts of the bell apparatus. And then we also need to assess monuments and markers. So the additional funding request this year is two thousand dollars was in my budget last year to find someone to triage our markers. And that includes the military markers as well. However, it's very difficult to find somebody to come out to prepare something that is useful for us for that amount of money. It's, it's a big investment of time for them. And so Tom suggested adding three thousand dollars so that we can, for a total of five thousand dollars, we can adequately fund this professional assessment. And I think that's it.
Andrea, thank you. Thank you for walking us through it.
Thank you.
Liz, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a quick question on, on that last point, Andrea. The, so the, the annual assessment of the monuments won't happen this fiscal year? And it's carrying over to next year? Is that, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. It's just to engage somebody to, to come to town and to not only evaluate the monuments and markers and there's, there are fifty or so around town or more. But also to put them in order of work that's needed for preservation purposes and treatment. And so it's, it's more time consuming than two thousand dollars can take care of.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
Thank you, Andrea. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Liz's question. So they're gonna, they're gonna look at all the monuments and markers. They're gonna put an order of merit list together in terms of, you know, what needs to go in order of most, most pressing needs, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, Andrea, just, and a quick comment. Now every time I walk around the downtown area or drive down North Street and I look at how nice our town is and how historic it is, I just think about the great work that the, the district commission does or the, or the historical commission. And I know that you are an integral part of all of that. So thank you for all the great work you do.
Well, thank you. Unfortunately, we have a lot of good stewards in town who take care of their properties. And that's really, that's really important. So, thank you so much.
Great. So Andrea, this is, the budget is well presented. Really appreciate your efforts. I have a question looking next year and the year after. And this is coming to me from a number of residents is how can the town best align historic preservation with energy efficiency? You know, older buildings, you know, are generally less energy efficient than buildings constructed you know, after two thousand. And to what extent are you working with other groups to, to sort of align the interests of the star preservation with the town's commitment to a net zero policy?
Well, for the first time, we had a, an installation of solar tiles on a house, a large house on North Street. And so that was the first application we had, the Tesla solar tiles. And so, you know, we encourage that. And, you know, we also will approve, you know, other forms of, you know, solar resources as well, depending on where they're located. So I think that's, that's always the, the challenge. Solar panels, for example. So it's, that's the struggle to maintain the historic character of a property and still allowing for use of, of solar technology. But the demand hasn't been that great yet. In terms of other, in terms of other efforts, I think probably our windows
Yes.
are the most critical thing. And we just had, thanks to Jeff, PZ, company came in to evaluate the windows in the G A R Hall. And so, to Keith's point, they were falling out after the last storm. So right now they have a single pane, true divided light window. And they are double hung. And they're all wood. And so this is, this will be interesting to see what the result is from this company that came in to evaluate the windows to determine whether in fact they are doing their job. The windows there were replaced about fifteen years ago, I think. And the, the building itself has undergone some challenges as, as you, you know, at some point it was wrecked out of shape. And so consequently, the windows were ill fitting. So those are the kinds of things we need to, we need to work on. I think the other piece of this is that it is important to note that the most energy efficient properties are are historic properties mainly because, you know, to, to tear something down and build something new expense a lot of energy. And so maintaining our historic properties is the greenest thing you can do, essentially. There's a lot of literature on it. Hard to convince people though. I think the, the replacement window industry has done a fabulous job of making people feel like they can't achieve a certain level of efficiency without new vinyl windows.
I mean, historic buildings often rely on passive forms of energy, which in fact is very efficient. So there's a need to sort of recognize the benefits and to what, to figure out ways that when appropriate that we can, we can upgrade to, to more energy efficient uses. And your leadership will be critical in moving the town in the right direction. So we appreciate that. Are there members of the public with any comments or questions for Andrea Young? Seeing none. We thank you.
Hey, Dr. Gallow, are you waving here?
Oh.
I don't know. I can't tell.
I didn't see any.
No, it's probably just a something moving, but not Dr. Gallow's hand. So, anyway.
She's always in motion. That's funny. So then we will turn to the next item on our agenda, which is the sewer commission. And I believe we have Randy Sylvester and it's Matt Cahill here as well.
Yes.
Yes. Great. Oh, yeah, there you are. So Randy, I'll leave it to you and you can defer to Matt however you, you choose to proceed.
So I have the sewer budget at hand here. Michelle can go through the, the, there's a couple of slides on it. It's generally the DPW budget. And that's about it, but. And that's about it, but.
Randy, I've lost you.
It looks like his connection may have dropped, Joe. He was getting all.
He's showing muted. There we go.
Okay. You got me? Okay. So, okay, this is the last slide. So I'll just go through the budget, please. So the wages. Are four thousand, four hundred thousand, two oh seventy seven. It is up nineteen thousand dollars from the prior year FY twenty two. And this is due to. Step increases in cost of living raise, raise. We get into the expenses next and. The major. The major increase is in buildings, R and M buildings. And this is due to the monitoring cost of the stations and also the cost. Of keeping up the stations. We've had to do a lot of work with doors and. Generators and whatnot because these stations are quite old and we're keeping it up. And I have put in forty thousand dollars initiatives budget. To keep up with the three year average that we have, which is about forty two thousand at this point. The other increases are electric and natural gas. And we have not increased the usage with that. It's just due to costs and it's only up thirty eight hundred bucks, thirty eight hundred dollars. Sorry. And the other major increase is vehicle fuel, which is up forty five hundred dollars. And again. I did not increase the usage on the vehicle fuel, but it is up fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty three dollars. Due to the usage. I mean, due to the, the cost of the fuel. The other one is we, there's an increase of a thousand dollars in safety training. Matt and I are going through a program with the whole DPW. Which is basically going through the safety program and we are adding certain. Safety. Equipment and we are. And programs basically. And that's going to cost us about twenty five hundred dollars. Could go up in the future, but we, we are estimating at twenty five hundred dollars right now. And then of course licenses are going up. I put up five hundred dollars because there is a cost. To the licenses in general. That's about it for expenses. The total inspect and expenses is seven hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty four. Two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. Seven hundred twenty three. No, I'm sorry. That's the total operating budget. Three hundred twenty one thousand, one hundred and seventy seven. Then next we go on to the engineering budget. Ten thousand dollars and that's, we do that every year for a engineering we need out in the field. Which we utilize on a yearly basis. And then we have the sewer utilities. From the M W R A, which that is the cost that we pump into the M W. M W R A system. And that is two million, four hundred thirty nine thousand, seven hundred fifty eight dollars. That's an increase of about seven percent. And I do get that figure from the M W R A. And. That is pretty accurate as we go and through the years. We do have the hall intermissional agreement. That is four hundred and fifty nine thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars. That is up from last year, three percent. And that is due to the fact that. In past years, they have increased more than they, than they have said they were going to. And I have kept it stable at a higher rate. In this year, the actual rate they're increasing it in the prior year is five percent. But because I've kept the increase stable. I'm only increasing it three percent to make sure we cover that cost. The, the total of. The sewer operating budget is three million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and three thousand and forty one dollars. Any questions?
Liz, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Randy. The, the encumbrances, can you just explain that section at the end?
The encumbrances are the expenses from last year that they didn't get their bills in. Or we weren't billed by the end of the year. And I do have to encumber that money. Every year in order to pay those bills, or I do have to go to the town meeting in order to get an okay to pay them.
Got it.
I do have to say, and I. And I forgot to mention this is, we have, we have done some upgrades in the stations. And it's more on the capital end, but we did do some upgrades, especially in the Broadcoast Station where we put. More efficient motors in and also VFDs which use less electricity. And we plan to do that in more stations when it warrants.
Okay, great. Could you just tell me what happened in the FY twenty one, the R and M buildings? It was almost seventy five thousand. What was that? What does that reflect?
Was it reflect?
It's a lot higher rate than the normal or what you're requesting this year.
Seventy five thousand was a lot higher. We, we have. What we do is we put in the budget to what we think is going to happen. Now, these stations are fifty years old. Sometimes we have repairs that we have to make to have these stations. Be viable and work.
Do you drop out again?
I think so.
So he was talking about. Yeah, there he is.
Yeah, my internet is going in and out for some reason.
So Liz, are you asking about?
Me, okay?
Yes. Liz, were you asking about the seventy five thousand R and M buildings in the actual twenty twenty one?
Yes.
And so, and then it dropped in twenty twenty two as in the budget and in twenty twenty three.
Exactly.
So.
So every year. We're going to expend what we need to keep these stations going.
Understood, understood. We can move on, Joe.
Yes. Any other, any other questions, Liz?
No, no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, Bill.
Yeah, I just two questions. How many, how many sewer substations do we have? Is it six?
Oh, we have thirteen companies in total.
Yes.
Good, okay. And just real quick, with the fifty two full time DPW staff. How many are strictly dedicated to sewer, the sewer department?
We have four full time staff that, that deal with the stations and whatnot. And we have two part time office staff, which we. We distribute, distribute the duties amongst all the staff, which we have four staff.
And I just tried to correct you. When you have in like, like, I guess a major sewer issue. Break or something, does, does all of the fifty two staff or a good majority ever go assist with that issue?
We specialty cross train people to deal with the sewer stuff, just because of the type of work it is. So that's how we tend to operate that end of the situation. But the staff that we have is very seasoned. And then we have emergency contracts that also help deal with those major situations.
Got it. Understood. Thank, great. Thanks for answering that. Appreciate it.
So, am I correct that?
I apologize, my internet seems to be going in and out.
That's okay, because we can take advantage and. You know, you can't respond sometimes. So the. Am I correct that the, the DPW budget itself has sewer department offsets so that you've got certain personnel who. Who work, let's say twenty one hours a week on, on sewer and that's, and so you offset your. DPW budget against the hours that are put in by other employees. Is that, is that fair?
That is correct.
Okay. And. I don't know if this is the place to have the discussion and Tom, I'm looking to you for some guidance. I don't see any, the revenue here because sewer department sends out bills. Where do we see the revenue? Tom?
You, you won't see it on this side, Joe, just the expense budgets here, but you will see it in our forecasts on the revenue side there. And Randy may have mentioned, but the sewer budget is self supported by sewer rates.
Right. So where I was going is to the extent that we see increases. Salaries, expenses, whatever, is that offset by, by the rates?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so from a budgetary standpoint. It's, this is a self sufficient entity. Yes. Great. And Matt, did you have anything else to add? Nope, you're, you're shaking your head. This is, this is your chance because Randy's internet is so bad, you can say whatever you like.
Yeah.
He's at a disadvantage.
That's, that's true.
No, are there any members of the public with questions on the sewer department budget? Seeing none. Randy, Matt, thank you for excellent presentation. Really appreciate it.
Sorry for the bad internet.
As long as it wasn't Bill Hartigan, because then we would have been in real trouble.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the South Shore Country Club budget and Kevin Whalen. There he is and he's unmuted. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Walk us through.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for everyone from, for having me here tonight. You know, I might have to use Randy's trick there if I have any difficult questions. You know, the South Shore Country Club looks forward to celebrating our hundredth anniversary in twenty twenty two and obviously part of fiscal year twenty three. The South Shore Country Club is an enterprise fund, which means that expenses are paid. For with the revenue that is generated from the golf course and other operations that we have at the country club. You know, we're a full service country club, offering an eighteen hole golf course, the driving range, golf simulators to keep us a year round facility for the golfers. Pro shop. And then we do have some tennis courts which are free for, as of right now for the residents of Hingham Bowling Alley. Is, is up and running and in doing things at a level that we were doing pre pandemic. And obviously we also provide the dining and function space and professional golf lessons. And youth programs that we partner with the Hingham Recreation. Our goal really is to provide a superior recreational experience for all. Country club guests through high quality facilities, programs, professional instruction and exceptional customer service. We work with the Country Club Management Committee and the Friends of Social developed long range plans. And enhance the infrastructure and amenities. And I just want to say this year we were able to raise through the first annual Bill Friend Tournament. We raised twenty five thousand dollars that will go directly into improvements in the course, you know, this, this coming season. So we're looking forward to doing those in Bill's name. We also, as we provide with a lease agreement with Vista Verdi. We provide the full service, you know, restaurant catering services and event venue for all types of events. You know, for citizens of Hingham, but also, you know, surrounding towns. We have, we're a very busy course. We had over thirty two thousand rounds this past season. It's something that, you know, we're probably one of the busiest public courses in the area. We've had a very good season again. We have a waitlist of over a hundred. People that are interested in joining as a permit holder. So we're, you know, we're, I think we, we do a great job of providing a great. Experience, golf experience at the same time as far as providing. You know, a good value for, for everyone as well. The key initiatives we have as we move in are. A new maintenance building. We're, we're in the process of doing the site work and we'll be putting that out to bid right after town meeting to finish that project. We also have the pool project that will be going on. We're in, at about eighty percent design at this point. And we're, you know, working to get that ready for town meeting, hopefully this spring. Also, we're going to be, once those two projects are kind of off the table, we'll be doing a master plan for the remaining of the project. I mean, the main, of the facility. As we go. So, and we're also doing a facility building assessment. As I said earlier, we're, you know, hitting our hundredth anniversary. At the country club. So that means the buildings are pretty old. And so we did do an assessment back in two thousand and five. And we're, but this facility assessment will do is provide us with a roadmap as far as what we're going to, what we're going to do in order. For deferred maintenance going forward. So it'll give us a, you know, one to three year timeline, three to five year, and then five to ten timeline for all. Capital investments. We just are winding down. We put out a new point of sale contract, which actually we have some good news with that. Currently, we use the vendor and it was a trade. It was, it was trade where they got a tee times plus the golf carts and we didn't have to pay anything. We put it out to, to bid and actually we got a very favorable bid. And we're looking forward to awarding that probably right after the first of the year. So it's going to save us. I think in the end it will be a net win for the country club as we had anticipated that we'd be spending about fifty thousand dollars for that contract. And it came in significantly less than that. And I think we'll generate actually additional funds than actually the fifty thousand. So it's going to be a win win. In this budget, we have a new front end loader that we're requesting that will be paying. We won't be borrowing the money. We will be paying for that out of our budget. And it's something that is needed. We have a two thousand and seven front end loader now. It's, can still do a lot of different. Can still do a lot of tasks that we need before, but there's some of the things that we just, you know, it's getting old and a little tired and we need a new piece of equipment to do some of the work. And I think it became very evident during the recent storm that we had when we were trying to do tree work out on the course. That the, you know, that we, that we needed a new front end order to be able to lift some of the heavy logs in the woods and things like that that we needed to. You know, get to. So we're putting that in our budget this year as a capital item, but we're going to be paying it through our operation expenses. There's also a need for doing capital improvements to the part of the function area of the restaurant. Building over to the east side. We've had an assessment done structurally to make sure that it was fine for people to be in there. But we're going to need to do new windows and a new siding over on that side of the building to ensure, you know, that we. You know, to improve that, that building and make sure that it's sound structurally and all that. So we have twenty five thousand dollars in our budget to do that. Complete that work as well. Another, you know, initiative would be the increased revenue as we do return. I know it's kind of saying we're returning to, with, with everything that's going on with COVID currently, things have really kind of ramped back up at the country club and we. Anticipate having increased revenue as we return to full operation with the bowling alley and. The simulators, you know, and of course the golf lessons, all that still has been very strong revenue as we kind of move into this fiscal year and anticipate. The bowling to actually improve into FY twenty three. So in this budget, we have, so the social country club staff and expenses. Is eleven full time personnel. And then seasonally, we have about twenty five part time seasonal staff. That is for starters, for people on the. The also part time folks and seasonal people that are out on the golf course working to mow the lawns, rake the, the traps. You know, mow the greens. And then we also have, you know, several people that teach the camp lessons as well. Uh, to, you know, mow the greens, and then we also have, you know, several people that teach the camp lessons as well. So major new expenses are fifty thousand dollars for the reservation system, we found out that that's only gonna be about thirty thousand, which is a good savings for us. Uh, we spend about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for golf course applications. This is for like fertilizer and, and those type of items, herbicides to, you know, make sure that the uh. The place uh, you know, is stays in good condition. Uh, we're very vigilant about doing that, and you know, this year we had to uh, you know, spend a little bit more money because of the, the way the weather was. Where it was very warm, muggy, and also wet, you know, that we had to be aggressive in, in treating the course to make sure that we kept it in good condition. Um, we have about seventy thousand dollars that we purchased for pro shop merchandise. Oh, just over ninety thousand for utility costs, and then I have seventy-five thousand in there for the purchase of a new front-end loader. The, yeah, and then there's a, we, a total rev- uh, total expenses will be one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand. Um, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that will be for seasonal and full-time personnel. That is an increase, uh, there's a couple of things that we need to do to ensure that we're competitive in the marketplace, to recruit some people working on the golf course. Um, but also from the wage classification study, um, you know, people had received increases as well. So um, you know, that's why there's a bump up in the uh, personnel line on. So, we're looking forward to a great fiscal year twenty-three, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to. Answer away.
Great, and we are looking to a successful uh, calendar year twenty-twenty-two with you, so, so thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Liz Klein.
Um, I couldn't find the capital equipment, but I just found it for the front-end loader, so. Um, that, that makes sense, thank you, Kevin. Um, can you just talk a little bit about um. Kind of where, where we are currently with the, the golf fees? Are we tracking well in terms of the revenue?
Yeah, so our revenue this year has been tracking very well, we're up a little bit over where we were last year, which last year we were able to um, go over two million dollars. Um, so that was a first since I've been there, that we were able to get over two million dollars in revenue, so it was a pretty successful year last year. We will definitely, in this budget, I believe we, we have about um, my total number for the revenue is um. Two million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, that's based on two things, one thing was last year that we did go up ten percent on our rates. Uh, but what we did do was that we said that if you were a member in the prior year, that you did not have to, you would not see that increase because. They missed us in almost two months due to COVID, so we gave them that ten percent break for that, uh, those several weeks that they missed on the golf. So we'll see about two hundred people will be paying that increase, so that'll be an increase of about fifty thousand dollars this year and also next year. Uh, and then, of course, we anticipate that the um, revenues will be strong for um, the day use, but also. Um, in the bowling alley will increase and the Sims will increase this year, and then our camp revenue has really been very strong over the last. Um, year, we partnered with the Hingham Recreation to provide summer camps, but also we provide camps throughout the year. Um, you know, so any day you go up there, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, we've been filling up those camps, you know, there's about, you know, twelve to sixteen kids that. Uh, you know, we bring them in the simulators in the wintertime, so our revenue has been strong. With the, you know, the, using the partnership with the rec, and then we also have our regular uh, golf lessons as well, so. I think on all cylinders, we've been doing um, very well as far as our revenue, and I project that that will uh, continue through FY twenty-three. And as I said, we have a very healthy waitlist uh, for people that want golf permits, so we're. You know, I think we'll be in a, a good spot for the next uh, few fiscal years.
Excellent, thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
Uh, Kevin, what is the cost of a membership and how many members do you have?
So it, it varies, um, we have about a hundred and twenty-five unlimited, which unlimited is. Um, you know, people that can play at any time, and they have the opportunity to book ten days out, and then we have about a hundred and twenty-five limited. Um, those individuals can play uh, afternoon time on weekends, and they have seven days to book. Um, you know, their tee times, so we keep it about two hundred and twenty-five of each. Um, and there's varying levels of um, you know, unlimited, and then if you're a resident as well, so if you're senior, you get a discount. Um, if you're, you know, um, you know, family memberships as well, we have those, which they receive a little bit of a break as well. And then we break it out between the residency and the non-resident as well, so all, and I think it's like thirty-two fifty, Bill, if you were kind of a non-resident, and I believe it's about. Twenty-nine fifty if you're a resident for an unlimited, and then if like, for instance, if you're a senior resident, it'd be seventeen hundred, and if you're a non. Um, senior, uh, a non-resident senior, it would be about two thousand. So, and I can send that information to you if you wish.
Only reason why I asked, somebody was asking about the, the, the length of the waitlist recently, and I.
Yeah.
I didn't, I had no idea there was such a long waitlist, but it's, I think that in comparison to other. Um. To other golf courses or clubs, o- ours is, is a really good rate, um, a very good rate, so. I know it's very popular, it's a great course, obviously, too, so, and you know, just, and I know then with one comment, Kevin, the um. The partnership with the rec department over the years have been just very successful, so it's great to see that continuing, I know it's. Works well for the, the club, and it works great for the rec department as well, so it's great to see that happening.
Yeah, yeah, we work very close with both Mark and Mike um, Bernard over at the, the rec, and it's uh, you know, it's great revenue for us. It's great to get a nice big check at the end of the summer.
Sure.
Anything else, Bill?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Kevin, that was a wonderful presentation. Um. I've got just a, a few questions with respect to the front loader, which is, seems to be a hot topic, is there any reason that that can't be. Shared with the DPW, is, is there a need for your own front loader?
Oh, we, we do share equipment, and actually, we have one of their front-end loaders that we have, uh, that we use um, from time to time. Um, and we do use some of their, like, you know, big rough mowers and things of that nature for like the, the heavy uh, mowing. So we do do that, and I think, you know, if we did purchase this, I mean, it would be an opportunity for them to, if they have like a, a need. Um, you know, specific, this one is, it's, you know, part of the, the difference for us is that. We can't have a heavy front loader because it would do damage to the course.
Right.
Um, but, and what this front loader would uh, allow us to do is allow us to do a lot of work in-house, so for instance. Uh, it's gonna be a type of piece of equipment that will allow us to kind of shape out. Um, you know, the sand traps and things like that, that's really right now, we have to actually bring staff in from uh, you know, a vendor and from outside. Thing, we'll be able to do that in-house with this, but we do work closely with the DPW, and if they do have a need, or if we have a need, we do communicate with one another to. You know, provide and swap equipment out.
Yep, that makes sense. Um, and I've gone through your budget, and I don't see any COVID-related expenses pulled out. Uh, uh, specific for, for, for COVID, and I'm, I didn't know if there are any, I'm assuming there are. And if there are, are they being covered by state and or federal uh, revenue sharing?
Yeah, we don't have it specifically spread out into a lineup, but we do have it, and that, we do send up the uh, any expenses that we have had.
Yeah.
We um, we send up those expenses to town hall for uh, processing. And um, you know, one of the reasons why was because I think when the first round um, was gonna be up, we actually ordered, pre-ordered a lot of different um. Material at the last round that we're still going through, like masks, gloves, and things of that nature.
Okay. Double checking that.
Yep.
Okay, any member of the public have questions on the South Shore Country Club budget? I am seeing none, Kevin, thank you as always.
Happy holidays, thank you, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Kevin.
That concludes our fiscal year twenty-three department budget requests for this evening, and there will be others at subsequent meetings. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of four special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to John Davenport. On behalf of the Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for the twenty-twenty-two Winter Art Series to be held at Ames Chapel. On January eighth and March five, twenty-twenty-two at seven-thirty PM, and on February tenth and March third, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Uh, I see Larry Linder uh, is here, is Barbara here as well?
Hi, I'm Barbara.
There you are, I kept seeing Barbara's iPad, there we go, great. Um, so please, if you could explain uh, what your request is.
Uh, well, we're requesting um, one-day liquor licenses. Um, we're having four different events, uh, January eighth, February tenth, March third, uh, March fifth. Um. We actually may uh, postpone the, the January eighth um, event due to the current. Uh, COVID numbers. Um, and we may push that out to, to April. Um, or even March. Um, but we, we would like to reschedule it if we decide that we're gonna do that. Um, and uh, the event start at either seven o'clock or seven-thirty, uh, we'll be serving beer and wine. Um, about half an hour before the event actually begins. Um, and those will be served in the lower level of the Ames Chapel, the um. Actual event will take place and the, the kind of street level of, of the building. Um. I know, what, what other uh, questions would you have?
Um, if you could just cover uh, the police and fire marshal concerns, to make sure that, that they've been addressed. Uh, and I do see that we have uh, Chief Jones on the line as well, uh, but either Larry or Barbara, if you want to address those.
Barbara, do you want me to jump in?
Yes, please.
Okay, so um, this is our fourth year putting on the Dead of Winter Art Series, and in the second year. Uh, then Chief Olson and Fire Marshal Denapoli had concerns uh, that they communicated with us about by email, and I have the back and forth. And um, they said, once you mix music, cause the first event is a jazz concert, once you mix. Jazz and alcohol, you're really talking about a nightclub situation, and in that case. Um, it, the number, numbers change and, and numbers matter, and there are other things that have to come into play. And one of the things was um, definitely a, a hundred attendees was a trigger point for a nightclub situation. And our maximum capacity for these events is ninety-two, so um, we're under the hundred, they also said, um, if it. Uh, I forget if they said if it, I think they said if it reached a hundred, but either way, they said um. In that case, you would have to have a sprinkler system, and we have a very um, advanced. Fire suppression system that includes a sprinkler system. Um, there was some concern about parking too from the police department, and of course, when the Ames Chapel was rehabbed, we had to um. Go to the planning board to. Uh, get it determined how many parking spaces we needed in the cemetery, and we have seventeen diagonal. And we have eight that go around this mound called the Faxter Mound, and then we have anywhere between five and ten, depending on the size of the vehicle. That can go not along the roadway uh, between South Street and Water Street, because Egress has to remain completely open for. Fire trucks and police cars to get through, but to the side of that, on the grass where there are not stones, so. It's about thirty to thirty spots in the cemetery, most cars carry at least two people. And whoever doesn't park in the cemetery parks either in the municipal lot in Station Street. Or somewhere along north or south streets, which generally is a problem because. On a Saturday evening at seven-thirty, or on a Thursday evening at seven o'clock, most of the, the retail establishments are closed. For business by that time, so we're not interfering with their being able to let customers park in front of the store, and it's always worked. Uh, in the, in the previous three years that we've done, we didn't do it last year because of COVID, it's, it's always gone very smoothly. Oh, the other thing was um. I forget if it was then Chief Olson or, or Fire Marshal Denapoli said you uh, should also have a um, a crowd manager. So um, I am certified as a crowd manager, and obviously, my, by my brawn, I'm the right person for that. But um, but actually, what a crowd manager does is it points out the exits in case of a fire, and we have two exits on the. Uh, main floor where the concerts, where the events actually take place. One is at the front and one is at the back, and we also have one exit downstairs, so we have good. Get-out ability, should God forbid, that need to happen, and um, at that time. Um, then Chief Olson and Fire Marshal Denapoli were satisfied with our explanations, and I just want to add that. Um, yes, we do serve wine and beer and refreshments in the basement, and. But it doesn't feel like a nightclub, it feels more like a theater, you know, the seats are in rows with some seats along the sides with old pews. And a few seats that we rent along the sides, but it's not like people sitting at high-top tables and chatting while the music is going on and. Going to the bar and getting more drinks, it's a very structured event, there's two sets of music, forty-five minutes each with a ten to fifteen. Um, minute intermission, it feels more like a performance than a. A straight before, a straight, it's more like a Symphony Hall thing than a. Nightclub-y kind of deal.
So just getting back to the crowd managers, I saw in two thousand nineteen, there were six crowd managers.
Well, what, what John Davenport said in that email is that six people would be acting as crowd managers. Of course, we have most of our board, we have a thirteen-member board, and most of them, most of them attend the events, and they're all very well. schooled in what the chapel is like, but I am the only um, person who actually took. The crowd manager certification test, and uh, would like to add that I got nineteen out of twenty correct. I, God forbid, the thing happens that I got wrong.
One, you know, you know it. Chief Jones, do you have anything you wanted to add on this?
Uh, other than I have full faith in uh, Larry's ability to be a crowd manager. Like uh, like they both said, this has been a repeat uh, event, they didn't have it last year, uh, the previous years, we, we had no issues at all down there. Uh, there was no concerns about uh, parking or complaints about that, uh, the events ran very smoothly. Um, so we have uh, no concerns about the issuance of these uh, one-day uh, permits.
Thank you, um, Liz, any questions?
Um, thank you for going through all of that, Larry, um, comprehensively, um, and the, the history of it. Alright, so this is, these are ticketed events, is that right? So it's limited to the ninety-two?
It's, yes, it, it's, it is limited to the ninety-two, and when they're sold out, the sold-out sign goes up on the website.
Okay, very good, thank you.
May I just ask a question that John Davenport had?
Sure.
Um, he wanted to know if we do end up moving any of the dates because of, of um, COVID concerns. Do we have to reapply for the one-day license and pay the money for another license for the other date, or can we just? Take the one-day license and apply it to the new date?
So I'll, I'll answer part of that, uh, which is that you cannot. Apply a license on day one for an event on day two.
Okay.
Um, and so, which is the reason when, when some events come before us, they propose a date, and then they propose rain dates. Or alternative dates so that they're covered, uh, I don't see that in this application, so these are the dates, if you can, if you have. Specific dates that you do want to propose now, you should amend the application, and I'll let you do it on the fly. Um, but o- otherwise, you will have to come back um, and get a new license, I don't know about the fees if, if they.
Okay, we'll have to come back because um. All of this Omicron stuff is, is so brand-new and just got dropped at our feed, and we would have to talk to the talent and see when they're available, so. We'll just come back, it's not the end of the world.
Yeah, and it's, we, we, and I know the town just appreciates you being sensitive to the COVID-related issues, cause. Health is, is paramount, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Bill?
What, what's the, what are the hours of the event?
So um, the, the January eighth and the March fifth, which are both, um, one is music performance and one is theater performance. Um, the, the performances begin at seven-thirty and they go till about nine, although the doors open at seven. And for the other two events, the February tenth and the March third, those are author talks. They're Thursday evenings, they start at seven, they go till about nine tops, and the doors open at six-thirty, a half hour before.
Great, and uh, Chief, you, you require police details part of the department, right?
What's this?
I listen to Chief, Chief, you require a detail?
Uh, I don't believe I required a detail on this one, previously, um. Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we, for any of the events, we've required details, and this one, I'm not requesting one.
Thank you, it, it, Bill, the average age of the crowd is ancient, it's very staid and. It, it really goes smoothly.
Yeah, I'm just thinking ninety-two people, alcohol, parking, not, no lighting up in the cemetery, well, okay. Uh, okay, I'm talking right now, but thanks, I'll defer to the chief.
So we'll have um, we'll have units on scene those nights, and if, if it's getting out of hand, we'll talk to uh. And if it's getting out of hand, we'll talk to the management that's on site at the event. And if a details is needed, they can hire one that evening as well.
Okay, I mean, if you didn't need one last time and it went okay, Chief, then, um, okay.
They all went, they all went very smoothly, and most of the businesses had emptied out other than the restaurants at the times he started previously. It looks like it's the same as this year. So parking really wasn't an issue down in the business area either.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just, just one comment to follow on that. If you are going to add another date to replace the January date, if it's a Thursday, you might want to stay away from the Thursday, because the shops do stay open later on that day once a month. So it might be more crowded.
That one would be a Saturday, because it's, yeah.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yep.
Just so I'm clear, Barbara and Larry, just picking up on Bill's question in terms of when these events end. Is it fair to say that for the ones, whether it's seven or seven thirty, they'll be over by nine PM? Or is that too aggressive?
I think it's fair to say that the seven PMs, ones would be over about nine, but the seven thirty ones. I mean, they would end about nine, but people hang out for a half hour to forty minutes. So I think it's safer to say between nine thirty and ten.
Okay. Because we typically, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that when we do these licenses, there's both a beginning time and an ending time. And in what I see in the proposed motions does not have an end time. And Bill's point of asking that, I think, is important. And the motion should, in fact, indicate the end time.
It is, that is our normal practice, and I think that would be the right thing to do.
So what I'm hearing is when it comes time for a motion, that the events starting at seven thirty would be till approximately ten PM, and the event starting at seven would be to approximately nine PM. And so are there any questions from members of the public?
And I just made one more comment. Joe, I noticed on the application, the attendance says up to ninety. Do we need to change that if it's ninety-two?
Just say ninety.
Are you asking us?
I'm asking Joe.
So I guess Larry, is the real number ninety-two?
The real number is ninety-two.
So then I think the records should reflect that the application has been amended to show a event attendance of up to ninety-two. Good point. And so with that amendment, and the record will mark it on the application, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Right, I make a motion to approve four special one day wine and malt beverages licenses to John Davenport on behalf of the Friends of Pingham Cemetery Incorporated for the 2022 Winter Art Series to be held at Ames Chapel on January eighth and March fifth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty PM, and on February tenth and March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM.
So actually, Bill, if you could amend that to be for the March, January eighth and March fifth to seven, at seven thirty PM through or until approximately ten PM, and then on February tenth and March third at seven PM to approximately nine PM.
Joe moved.
Second.
We do a roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Those licenses are approved. And again, if you wind up changing the dates, please let us know, and we'll have to reschedule for another hearing.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, good to see you both.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on our agenda is to consider approval of the 2022 Common Vicular License Renewals. And we have a list, and Tom, if you could just walk us through what has been done to make sure it's appropriate to issue these renewals?
Absolutely. So I'll read off what we prepared for both common vic licenses as well as limousines. Licenses complete the common vic license renewal application, confirming their licensed premises and hours of operation, and they return it with the appropriate fee, in this case, a hundred dollars for the common vic license. The common vic licenses are effective January one through December thirty-one. I have a limousine one too, when you're ready for that.
So anything else? So these, the common victors, this is for serving food?
That's right, yep, this is not alcohol.
Alcohol, so is there anything with the Board of Health that's a part of this renewal process?
Not as part of this process, no. They have their own, you know, they govern these restaurants in other ways.
Okay, and then let's move to the license, the limousine license renewals.
The limousine license, license renewals, the licensees complete the license, the limousine license renewal application, and returned it along with a certificate of registration, certificate of insurance, copy of the driver's license, and the appropriate fee, in this case, fifty dollars. And the limousine licenses are effective January one twenty-two through December thirty-one twenty-two.
Liz, do you have any questions before we do the motion on the common victor licenses?
Just, just to be clear, these are all renewals, nothing new, correct?
That's right.
Okay. No questions, thank you.
Bill?
No, I'm just looking through the list here, everything, I have no questions.
Okay, and any questions on the limousine license renewals? Liz?
No questions, I know, well, just a comment, the Boston, Logan, anywhere, we just approved this past fall, yeah, so assuming, Chief, there's been no issues with that, right?
Right, Liz, has it been done with that one or the other one either?
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
None.
Okay, so I am prepared to take a motion on the common victor license renewals.
Okay, and are we going to do it as listed on the agenda?
Yes, we will.
Okay, I'll try to remember that, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the following common victor licenses effective January one, twenty twenty-two, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, it's approved. Let's move to the 2022 limousine license renewals.
Make a motion to approve the following limousine license renewals effective January first, twenty twenty-two, through December, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, they are approved as well. I don't believe we have any appointments to consider this evening, so I'm prepared to move to the COVID nineteen update.
Perfect, thank you, Joe. So I have a, here with me, I have a rather lengthy report tonight. There's a lot to report out on, so I'll just get right to it. Regarding COVID data across Massachusetts, according to the Department of Public Health, we are seeing a seven day average of over four thousand one hundred new COVID nineteen cases as of yesterday, again, across the state, compared to a seven day average of about one thousand one hundred two months ago. So that's a fourfold increase. Regarding hospitals, hospitalizations for COVID nineteen have been increasing since mid-November. In Hingham, we are continuing to see a sharp increase in new COVID nineteen cases. The DPH is reporting one hundred and sixty-seven new COVID nineteen cases during the fourteen day period reported on December sixteenth of twenty-one. That's compared to eighty cases over the two week period reported two weeks ago. So that's eighty cases two weeks ago, up to one hundred and sixty-seven this most recent period. In light of these trends, we are asking everyone to continue to take precautions to protect himself and others from COVID nineteen. Public health protocols to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen include wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, frequently washing hands, and of course, getting vaccinated. Regarding vaccination, today, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health reviewed, released a review of breakthrough COVID nineteen cases in vaccinated Massachusetts residents, and found nearly ninety-seven percent of all breakthrough cases in the Commonwealth have not resulted in hospitalization or death. Additionally, the review found unvaccinated residents, unvaccinated residents are five times more likely to become infected than fully vaccinated residents. Two doses of the Moderna or Pfizer vaccine, or one dose of Johnson and Johnson, is what is considered fully vaccinated. And unvaccinated residents are thirty-one times more likely to become infected than fully vaccinated residents who have received a booster. The overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now eighty percent. If you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, people age five and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is eighty-five percent. According to the Department of Public Health, approximately sixty-two percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven have received at least one dose of a COVID nineteen vaccine, and about forty-two percent of residents ages five to eleven are fully vaccinated at this point. So the kids are, those vaccinations for the kids are increasing each week, which is good. The Hingham Health and Fire Departments are organizing a regional vaccine booster clinic with the town of Cohasset for Tuesday, January fourth. The clinic will take place at the South Shore Baptist Church in Hingham, and will offer Moderna booster shots, Moderna booster shots to residents from Hingham and Cohasset. Again, that's January fourth for a large clinic at the South Shore Baptist for booster shots. There will be more details on our website about how to register in the near future. We are also holding a smaller clinic for Hingham residents only on Tuesday, December twenty-eighth. That's one week from today, from nine AM to twelve PM, with limited booster shots available. The clinic will take place at the South Shore Baptist Church also. More details and information on how to register can be found on the town's website at hingham-ma.gov. Registration for that clinic is now open. Other local resources include a drive-up vaccine clinic at the Marshfield Fairgrounds three days a week. The Johnson and Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer vaccines are all available at the Marshfield Clinic. They are encouraging people to make appointments at marshfield-ma.gov, but will also offer shots to those without appointments while supplies last. Those without appointments should arrive before two PM. They are offering first and second vaccine doses and booster shots in Marshfield. The holiday schedule for the Marshfield Clinic will be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday during the week. That's December twenty-first through twenty-third, and during New Year's week next week, December twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, from nine AM to four PM. CVS and Walgreens locations in Hingham are both offering vaccines by appointment only. Testing. So the town is currently in the planning stages for a local drive-through testing facility that will be held at three thirty-five Lincoln Street. It is possible that this site will be up and running by mid-January as our partner staffs up and procures the necessary supplies. Our local management, emergency management team is actively working through the logistical details regarding the use of this site. The town is also working with the state and private sector to understand how best to make at-home testing kits available to the public. As we learn more about these options, we'll report out our plans. And as a reminder regarding that, the state of Massachusetts is offering lab-based PCR home test kits that no cost to eligible Massachusetts adults. Kits are reserved for adults eighteen and over who live or work in a congregate setting, are experiencing symptoms, have recently been in contact with someone with COVID nineteen, or who have otherwise been recommended for testing. So please visit the Pixel by Lab Corp. That's L-A-B-C-O-R-P, Pixel by Lab Corp, for Massachusetts webpage for details and to request a test kit. And that's it, Joe.
Tom, I recall we previously discussed a possible for vaccination, a mobile unit at the high school?
Yes.
Is that still in the works, do you know?
It is still in the works. I spoke with the, the emergency management command team today, spoke with Dr. Myestes, and he is working with the state. They have not given him a date yet. So at this point, he's all registered and signed up and is simply awaiting the state to provide him with a date.
Got it. And I did read in the press that it was either today or yesterday that the president announced that the federal government's going to be purchasing a half a billion home rapid COVID nineteen tests, and will be distributing them free to people who request them through a website, starting in January. And that information's going to be, it's not yet available, but it'll be posted on one of the federal government websites.
And we'll make sure that it gets onto our site as well, Joe, as though, true.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Just a question about the testing site. Is that going to be run through Empathy or?
That's right.
It is Empathy, okay. Just a comment then, if there's anything we can do to expedite that, as I think of many residents are going to require testing following January first.
Yeah, absolutely, no, we recognize the urgency. First, again, we were, if you remember from last week, we were very much hopeful that the state was going to do this for us. Turns out that is not the case. So we started our, ramping up our efforts at that point. Empathy needs to hire nurses, you know, we don't have that kind of staff in place to simply put in place. If you think of the vaccine clinics, those are, in essence, one or two day events. So our firefighters are able to staff those, those vaccine clinics with the testing. They're three days a week for several months likely. So it becomes a bigger, a bigger, a bigger lift. And our existing employees in the fire department aren't able to staff that. So we need to go outside, and he needs to, the gentleman that owns Empathy will have to staff up and find some nursing staff capable of doing that work for us. The good news is, is it's likely to be a drive-through clinic, so it should be very convenient when we get it going. Although I am a little bit worried about the winter nature of this testing clinic over there, but we'll figure it out.
Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Bill?
Yeah, Tom, all good developments here. Agree with Liz on anything we can do to expedite the Empathy site. Is, can we, anything we can do to get this information out of the public is appreciated as well. I know a lot of people on social media have been asking about vaccination clinics, testing information. So anything we can do to get information out through the towns, public relations systems, press releases, our social media, maybe the anchor can help us out too with respect to the upcoming clinics, and maybe testing coming soon, more information to follow. But even if, you know, in January, not only do people need testing now, but the college students coming home will need to be tested probably before going back to their camp, respective campuses as well. So that's because the need is going to be even of a greater urgency for them to go back in January. So good stuff, Tom, great work, thank you for all of this. And if you could just assist with getting the information out, that'd be great.
Will do.
Yes. Bill, like you, I've been getting calls, probably a half hour before this meeting started, with the most recent one, about the, are we going to have testing and what's the vaccination schedule look like? So again, getting the word out is going to be important.
Great.
I don't see any other members of the public, but I'll ask if there are any members of the public comments or questions on the COVID nineteen report. Seeing none, we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public with comments? Seeing none, I will move to Town Administrator Select Board reports. Mr. Mayo?
Not tonight, thank you, Joe.
Michelle?
I'm thinking, happy holidays to everyone.
Yes. Liz?
Just quickly about the Sustainable Budget Task Force. We are meeting this week and next week, so we're meeting all through December, and we will schedule another set of office hours in early January, so that'll be coming.
Thank you. Bill?
Want to wish everybody happy holidays and a peaceful new year, see everybody in January.
Yes. Happy holidays, a lot of work ahead of us, and I know we're all up to the task. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded it, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, we are adjourned.